Good evening, it's 15 and I'll call the Warren, June 23, Cedar Springs Public School for meeting to order. And to advise with me to the legislature, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm federal agents to provide of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation, on our ground, in the discipline with the rising contest of the problem.
Thank you, and if we can have a call please, and then we'll stay ahead of time that we do have Nat out for playing vacation. And able to lose her mother this weekend, please not for this, so our good will assist her. Trustee Bowser?
Here.
Trustee Lund?
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Here.
Secretary Slater?
Here.
And President Reed? Here. Thank you, and we've established a forum for strange. And with that, I would entertain the motion for adoption of the agenda. So moved, support, any discussion? Any none, Secretary Slater?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Lund?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes, motion period. That brings us to gratitudes, and I would open up the tables for Sheridan and Simon Gold first by. Would be out of your body to towards the campus inside and outside in the heat for kids.
I really suck at that, I know. And just, you know, Jenny on the way, and the thing, and yeah, it's just so much going on outside and in the sea, it's really quite brutal, so very much appreciated.
I'm just thankful for all the work, it's not just one year, but it's actually a multi-year, so as I drove into campus, I know we're still doing some work right over here, right over right over here, so you sit. Up and she came in the back way off of Northern Drive, you kind of come into the back and just really appreciate it. The signs that I know those are existing, we talked about those, but you just look at how impressive campuses and it's coming together, and you look at the work that we've done previously and the work that we're continuing to do on campus, it's just really, really impressive bodies.
Well, I feel bad, I brought my daughter, Myla, she's a 2018 graduate, and she was just so amazed by Beach. And then even the cold storage building, just everything was just, she was very, very, very impressed, and so.
Now, we got from addition by subtraction today, they started taking down the old core part of Beach. And so you can actually see the front doors now from the north of the new building. And that's the first time you've been able to add that view unless you were inside those. Just kind of move off these up, that building, out of the, out of its cocoon, it'll be fun to see the next couple of ways. Do we take, take that, take down, take down the old one and help us prepare the site for the evening?
Thank you. Moving on then, we have our consent items, our normal business before us, I would entertain a motion for as presented. So moved. So, Art? Secretary Slater?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Lund?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes, motion varies. That brings us to our discussion items for this evening, and first up, we have the Kent Intermediate School District Enhancement Village Resolution.
So this is the second time we had an opportunity to review this content, the Kent SD is asking districts for their support of resolutions so that they can go forward with a countywide village, and enhancement village that would support each student in the county, so it's a countywide village. They need support from a majority of districts from within the county or from the representation of at least fifty percent of the students. And then if passed, and if it's a renewal of an existing enhancement village. But if passed, then those dollars will be funneled out per pupil basis to students across the county. One thing that's different about this proposal, this resolution compared to the last resolution is that this resolution does include charter schools if they still choose to participate in the process. So a little bit different, but still very beneficial for Cedar Springs. So you'll be asked to support the resolution, just saying that Cedar Springs Public Schools is in favor of going to the voters in the fall for a renewal of this countywide.
I just want to acknowledge, you know, this day and age, there's a lot of talk about not wanting to pay more taxes. And while I totally understand that, my group, my opinion on this is it's going to put it out there to the voters, and then the whole voters will decide. Not acknowledging the people that don't necessarily appreciate anything.
So voting for the resolution really just as a vote for letting the public decide, it's not voting for it personally.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, it doesn't say that we are in support of the resolution or opposed to the resolution, it simply says that we are in support of putting the resolution on the ballot in November for the coming to make that connection.
So if less than fifty percent of the boards approve it, does it not go to the voters?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, not just, it's not fifty percent of the boards, but it's fifty percent of the students. So, for example, Kentwood has ten thousand students. We have three thousand, if you took our board plus Sparta's board, plus Kent City's board, plus Kenna was board. If all of our boards said no, but Kentwood's board said yes, then Kentwood's board would kind of, it would wash out those two. Yeah. So it's not individual districts, it's not fifty percent of the individual districts, it's fifty percent of the boards in their representation.
Just good representation.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Alright, we'll see that on later production. Next up, we have the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool Resolution.
So this is just a membership resolution, we spoke about it in May, and it's a three-year resolution saying that we are going to be, we would like to partner with the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool for their services of providing healthcare medical benefits for our staff. It's, it's an agreement basically, but it's not something that locks us in to participating with the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool. So if we just determine that we can get better rates and a better plan for our members, for our staff through another vendor, through Mesa or through Priority Health or something like that, then we could withdraw from the pool. And there will be no penalty to the district, it's basically saying that we want to continue our partnership with the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool into the foreseeable future. But if things change, then we need to go ahead and make that adjustment.
Any questions? Thank you, moving on. AP Comparative Government and Politics Textbook Proposal.
So we've surpassed our thirty-day window of time when the book was made available in the administration building for review. Two individuals, to my knowledge, reviewed the textbook. One individual was a former staff member, the other individual was a current staff member. And neither of them made any significant comments in favor or opposed to the text. Any questions, more please?
How long have that book, per se, if for? Was approved?
You know, typically a textbook cycle, a life cycle has a window of, you know, eight to twelve years. That's more of an old school line of thinking, because there's so much enhancement that can be done with online resources. So the core of the text, that's why this text is thinner. The core of the body of the text can remain in existence for a longer period of time because they supplement the core of the text with more relevant, more timely resources.
Okay, thank you. Great. Alrighty, here we go, the 2024-25 Final Budget Resolution tonight.
Alright, so today we have both the 2024-25 Final Budget Resolutions as well as the 2025-26 Initial Budget Resolution, so we have a total of, I believe, seventeen resolutions for your consideration. And hopefully action, well, action tonight. As I stated last, two weeks ago, I'd prepare a brief presentation for any changes that occurred between now and two weeks ago. So one major development was the House did release their school aid budget for twenty-five, twenty-six year. They originally discussed a twelve thousand dollar per pupil allowance. They kind of hit that twelve thousand dollars, but it is kind of broken up between the the Section Twenty Per-Pupil Foundation Allowance, and then they created a new Section Twenty-two F per pupil payment. So for the, the normal per pupil foundation allowance, they have a four point three percent increase, bringing that total to ten thousand twenty-five dollars per pupil. Then the new Section Twenty-two F, they added on one thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars per pupil. Bringing that total to twelve thousand per pupil. They essentially eliminated all the other categoricals in an effort to fund that nineteen seventy-five per pupil. They did maintain the thirty-one A at risk at current year funding levels. But as you can see, the Section Twenty-two L, the enrollment stabilization, the universal breakfast and lunch programs, the thirty-one AA mental health and school safety grants were eliminated, thirty-one N. And all three proposals have Section one forty-seven A four being eliminated. Based on the initial assessment, this, the House's proposal is very unlikely to gain any traction. They really only have funding, enough funding to cover this for one year, before that, two thousand dollars per pupil would have to be eliminated. And it would put the school aid fund in a pretty dire position going forward, so. So I am sticking more along the lines with the executive senate proposals right now for our twenty-five, twenty-six initial budget. Any questions on these?
When does that get finalized again? What's the date where they actually laying down a vendor order?
When are they supposed to and when will?
Yeah, when are they supposed to?
They are supposed to before June thirtieth. It will probably be August or September before we know. I would probably more lean towards September.
In some years, they've released the school aid budget before they've released the full budget. And I don't know if this will be, if that will be the case in this cycle.
I don't think so, because it's so intertwined with how are they going to fund roads? So the House's proposal shifted a lot of money from the school aid fund to cover community college and university funding. And that frees up some money from the general fund to fund the road initiative. So that's the big discussion, how, how are we going to fund those infrastructure projects going forward? So it's all kind of intertwined. Alright, so for the general fund twenty-four, twenty-five final budget, I do have revenues up just slightly over a hundred thousand dollars. Twenty-four thousand related to at-risk, we received a twenty-nine thousand dollar Section one forty-seven I benchmark assessment grant from the state that will cover our I-ready assessment software costs for this year. Received an additional nine thousand dollars from the ISD related to the Section one forty-seven G, that, again, that will be in and out. And then we received our final Medicaid Administrative Outreach Program number, that was a thirty-nine thousand dollar increase to our revenues. On the expense side, we have the expenses up just north of a hundred thousand dollars, the line share of that is I added ninety-five thousand dollars that we could potentially transfer to the new capital improvement fund. So our, our net increase to our expenses is around ten thousand dollars. We had a final support staff snow day pay, payment, some retirement tirry accrued sick pay payout. Adjusted our hourly staff wages to our last payroll. Add an adjustment to our edge of staff subs, and then I adjusted down our Region One Fed payments. I had anticipated about a hundred thousand dollars that we would have to pay for a one-on-one nurse for one of our students in a regional programming. But that district actually had a hard time finding that one-on-one nurse, so we only incurred about half, half a year of those costs. And it also came in a little bit less than what I anticipated even at, at, it was a lower rate than I would have anticipated as well. So I adjusted down our special ed payments to other districts. So we are still just, I have it just above break even with revenues being one thousand seven hundred and, I believe that's twenty-nine dollars. But that's pretty small, so. Any questions on the general fund final budget? For the general fund twenty-five, twenty-six general fund budget, we had revenues increasing just shy of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with expenses increasing about thirteen thousand dollars. Three main drivers to the revenues, I added twenty-nine thousand dollars related to that Section one forty-seven, uh, one oh four I benchmark assessment, so we got it this year. I believe it was included in both the House and executive budget, so I factored that in, added that into the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. We got our initial funding allocation from the ISD related to the IDEA flow-through grant. That was a eighty-seven thousand dollar increase, so that was eighty-seven thousand dollars additional federal money that we'll receive that we won't have to take out of general fund. So it didn't change our expenses, but it's no longer coming out of general fund, it'll be grant funded, an additional grant dollars. And then I increased the Medicaid AOP funding by thirty thousand dollars, anticipating a slight decrease compared to last year. Any questions on revenues? For expenditures, we had basic programs decrease about sixty thousand dollars. One large driver of that was we had some, we had some open positions that were filled with internal candidates, so we did, there was some shifting, and it that is resulting in an anticipated savings as we, as the chairs, as the music stops and the chair, people fill the chairs, we're anticipating a pretty significant savings on some of our salaries and benefits, because we'll have a, somebody coming in more likely at a BA one, maybe BA five. So when you add, compare that to a MA fifteen full family, it's a pretty significant savings. Also did reallocate the I-ready assessment tool from basic programings down to instructional staff services, because that's really where assessments should live. And then I had a final adjustment for edge of staff sub cost, which was an increase, the, the net of all those changes is the fifty-nine thousand dollars. For added needs, we had a twenty-five thousand dollar increase, added forty-five thousand dollars in personnel costs. Had one staff member move from a point seven five up to a full FTE, and then some other adjustments as open positions were filled. Dan Scoville has been very busy in the last two to three weeks filling open positions, so we're getting a better, a clearer picture on what those salaries are coming in at. And then I, as I mentioned, I decreased the Region One Fed payments to other districts by twenty-six thousand dollars based on our projected program participation for next year. Instructional staff support increased by twenty-nine thousand, that relates to the reallocation of the I-ready assessment software from basic programings down into instructional staff services. And then a, for maintenance operations, we had a seventeen thousand dollar increase to our annual property casualty insurance premiums. That's primarily related to, we had to increase our builder's risk amount, because right now we have July and August, September as we're completing, we're at the tail end of, you know, one major project and two other pretty significant ones, so we had to increase our insurance coverage related to those construction projects. I am working with SETSEG, I asked, I said, hey, you know, this was a seventeen thousand dollar increase to our premium, but those projects will be substantially complete and turned over late August, early September, you know, this is an annual premium, I should, we should be receiving a, you know, a rebate or a discount at that point, so she's looking into that, so. But for now, I budgeted the full amount, but I do not anticipate that being the actual full amount.
Is that pretty standard, we just take pictures of the project when it's complete and submit it so they can verify that that risk is decreased, and then they would give us?
Yeah, so essentially this taking the project from, and you know, from construction to, alright, now it's a, it's a live asset, it's being used. They ensure the value of what is the, the new buildings and new structures, but we no longer have, are paying builder's risk. You know, builder's risk would be tornado comes and wipes out your project mid, you know, mid completion. Well, you have to have funds available to start over. And since we're probably about ninety percent complete, that's why it was like, alright, we need to raise our coverage. School activity, we had some minor changes, increased revenue, projected revenue for twenty-four, twenty-five by seven thousand, as some final deposits were turned in. Decreased our expenses by eight thousand. You know, these are, the expenses, we still do have some final expenses coming in, but I felt pretty good decreasing it by eight, so our fund balance will be going up by approximately forty thousand projected right now. The capital improvement fund, the final and initial budget. The only change here is the, the all sources of revenue, I increased that by the ninety-five thousand dollars that I increased on the general fund side. And then that carries over into the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, when you factor in the projected ending fund balance in July first, two thousand twenty-five. And then for the two thousand twenty-three bond construction fund, the initial and final budgets. I increased the revenue slightly by forty thousand, forty-one thousand dollars, pretty, pretty sizable increase to our projected expenses. There's, I chewed up the May actuals, and then essentially we have three months remaining to complete three projects, so. Previously, I was using a cash flow projection that had been given to me, that Triangle had put together. I felt, given we only have three months remaining, I just took one-third of the remaining balance of the project and said, alright, that's what we'll budget for July, or for June. This really is kind of a timing difference, it's not, will not change the overall budget of the bonds, or that project is just a timing. So with those changes, right now projected fund balance of seven point three million dollars at June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Oh, and I also, I had to do in a, take into account a accounting entry that we have to do at year end. We have to recognize the retainage payable, so it's, you debit the expense, credit liability, so that's not an actual cash transaction that will incur. We'll pay those retainages out upon completion of the projects next August, September timeframe. But those adjustments impacted the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So revenues I have remaining the same, but we have a pretty significant decrease in our overall expenditures, because I shifted some from twenty-five, twenty-six into twenty-four, twenty-five. Still ending the next fiscal year with a projected fund balance of one point eight million dollars. That would leave us funds available for the projected arbitrage that we'll have to pay, as well as the final projects that we complete next summer. Any questions on any of those budgets?
I just had one, and you probably answered for me before, but just to refresh my memory, so when we estimate the incoming revenues, you have to have a ballpark of how many students we have, so we can multiply by the numbers of dollars. So we know, like, we've got a bunch of names, like, we know how big our class sizes are that are graduating out. How do we forecast the incoming class size to know whether we're getting, whether we're closing a gap or growing, you know?
So we use the live birth rates, and that, in the county, to, alright, so if we had, if in Kent County there were five thousand births five years ago, we kind of know, alright, there should be roughly five thousand students, new, uh, five-year-olds entering first grade or kindergarten this year, and you just kind of take, alright, we usually get you know, five percent of those five thousand. So the incoming classes really is a historical projection based off of the live birth rates. It's been a little bit harder to predict over the last three, four years. A lot of families are choosing either homeschool or private school. But we do keep a track of, obviously, of enrollment throughout the summer, but there's usually a pretty big push July, August, as families, especially new parents realize, oh, I better, I better get enrolled, so. And then the other district, or the other grades, we have a kind of a rollover rate, so we see historically, how many, if we have a hundred kindergartners, how many do we normally have signed up for first grade? If you have a ratio of one over one, then you're picking up students year over year, if it's less than one, you're losing students. Currently, we're more like point nine six, so on average, we're losing students each year at each grade level as an advance. So these resolutions will be upper action. State law requires boards to, required boards to pass the budgets before June thirtieth, but not the legislators.
Thank you for that. Okay, that brings us to a time for our full session, and pursuant to the Opens Meeting Act, Section A A for superintendent evaluation and Section A B for student discipline. I would entertain the motion to move into closed session.
So moved.
Supports any session? Secretary Slater?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Lund?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed? Yes, motion varies. We love the record show, we're entering into closed session at six point, returning back into open session, so if we can let record show, it is eight fifty that we return, we'll continue on with our agenda. And we had reports, our public comments, and this is just to have any papers from anybody who left the door.
No.
Well, go ahead and propose a public comment then this time. And we'll move to our action item for this evening, the first action item is the Kent Intermediate School District Enhancement. And we'll move to our action item for the speaking, the first action item on for tonight is the Kent Intermunicipal School District Enhancement Village Resolution. And I would entertain a motion for as presented, as it's already registered.
Sub moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasury Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Lund?
President.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed, motion carries. The second action item on for tonight is the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool Resolution, we would participate as presented. But any tension?
Sub moved. Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasury Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Lund?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes, motion carries.
Action item C is the AP Comparative Government and Politics Textbook Proposal. Which has been on review and previously shown to the board and the public, I would entertain a motion for as presented.
Remove, support.
Discussion? Having none, Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasury Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Lund?
No.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes, motion carries.
We have before the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five final buzzer, budget resolution, I would entertain a motion for as presented.
Sub moved. Or.
Any discussion? Having none, Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasury Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Lund?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes, motion carries.
Action item B, the twenty twenty-five, twenty-sixth initial budget resolution, I would entertain a motion for as presented.
Sub moved.
Support.
Discussion? Having none, Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasury Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Lund?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes, motion carries.
Last action item for this evening is the reinstated request. For student twenty-four, twenty-five, oh, one. I would entertain a motion for. As. Open statement.
Oh, make a motion for the reinstated request for student twenty-four, twenty-five, oh, one, for a conditional reinstatement. As outlined in our committee minutes.
There you go. And we have a second.
Is that with added mission, one added mission now? The administrative control we talked about?
Oh. It was my understanding that that administration control act.
That terming.
That was my understanding. Okay, so the motion is, okay, and basically, um.
Support.
Any further discussion? Questions? Okay, Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasury Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Lund?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes, motion carries.
That brings us to the communication portion of our meeting, and uh the board is up to date with what, and if there's something outstanding that I know of. Needs to be followed up with, and I return it over to Mr. Smith.
No new information from my table.
Planning, it's been a long meeting, thank you everyone for your time. And our next meeting will be July fourteenth, and anybody who's. It's summer, that happens, we hope the rest of our teammates will be back for us. And with that, having no more business before the course, we'll stand adjourned at eight fifty-five, thank you.